This was a fire of evacuation. Please leave the building by the nearest available exits and carry out the collation procedure.
Welcome, everyone. Sorry for the delay. For anyone watching at home, I apologise. We have had a fire alarm this morning and we had to evacuate the building. I'd like to thank officers for bearing with us and coming back in from the cold to the meeting. The meeting today is open to the public and is being webcast. We've not received any public questions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Please can I ask members and officers to put mobile phones and other such items on silent mode as so not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? Well, I was going to say there is no fire test planned, but we've had one this morning. So if the fire alarm does go off again, please just do what we did this morning and make your way out to Tudor Square. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website. Paper copies are also available in the meeting and there is an agenda reports pack and plus one supplementary pack. I understand that item nine is not to be heard today and I will invite officers to confirm this at the relevant point of the agenda. I ask each policy committee member now to introduce yourselves in turn. councillor Lee.
So councillor Mary Lee Donald Wood.
Thank you.
Councillor Colin Ross, Dorant Totley Ward and Lib Dem spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, West Echelfield Ward.
Councillor Peter Garbutt, Netheredge and Sherrill Ward.
Councillor Brian Homshaw, Broomhill and Sherrill Vale Ward and deputy chair of this committee.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies for absence today, please?
We do, yes. Councillor Gayle Smith has sent her apologies.
And there'll be councillor McRoney as well. Thank you. There is nothing on the report that requires us for exclusion of public and press? And do any members wish to declare an interest in any items on the business today? No? Thank you very much. Okay, item number five on the agenda is minutes of the previous meeting. If everyone's got sight of those, they start on page 11. Start on page nine. Okay, so if anything on page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? No matters arising. So are all agreed that there is a true reflection of the previous meeting? Agreed? Thank you. Okay, we don't have any public questions or petitions today, so on to item number seven, the work programme.
Good morning, everyone. So the work programme as it stands obviously has all of the items that we'll be discussing today. And then the next set of meetings are, the dates are being confirmed currently, but the next meeting will take place in June, a date to be shared with you shortly. We have one item currently, the threshold of need refresh, which will be discussed in the meeting in June. And then a number of items which you'll see later on in the work programme, which are yet to have a date set for them. As ever, I invite you to raise any issues you might have with the work programme or raise any items that you would like to be included in future agendas.
Thank you, Fiona. Does anyone have any questions on the work programme? Oh, that's all good. So now we're on to item number eight, which is the school calendar and it's been presented by John Bigley. Thank you, John, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. The request of committee is to approve the school calendar for 24/25. It's an annual item and the requirement of the council is to set the school calendar on behalf of all community and voluntary controlled schools. Schools that manage their own admissions, such as academies, voluntary aided schools, are free to set their own calendar. They do quite often use hours. I would say one exception is probably the church aided schools, especially around Easter, because there are different requirements that they tend to follow around that time. The consultation took place between 12th of January and 24th of February. And you'll see from the report, which is from page 27 onwards, there were only four responses received. Three were in favour of the proposed calendar and one was against. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do any members have any questions on the school calendar? No? Thank you. So the committee are being asked to recommend the school calendar for the academic year 2024/25. I will take silence as agreement. Does anybody dissent? No. So that's endorsed and agreed. Thank you. So we now go on to item nine, which should have been debated today but won't be. But if we could just have officers present the future of school improvement and the Learn Sheffield Commission and explain why this has been removed from the agenda. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Strong, Director of Education and Skills. And I'd like to introduce Stephen Mittleton, who's our schools advisor, who will make a short statement about the future of school improvement and the Learn Sheffield Commission report.
Good morning. We're asking the committees permission to defer this paper at this time. We'd hope to be able to bring the decision to you today. Unfortunately, we were unable to get all of the information that was needed to move forward. There was a concern that a decision would be requested in respect of the future of school improvement without providing sufficient information to inform that decision. So it was felt that the required information could not be obtained quickly enough to get it to committee in time for today's meeting. And so on legal advice, we're seeking permission to defer this paper to the next municipal year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for officers on this? And is everyone happy for this to be deferred to later on? Thank you. That's great. Thank you for coming. So the next item on the agenda is item number 10, Sheffield's Mental Health and Emotional Wellbeing Strategy. It's on page 43 of your agenda pack. And the presenting officer is Louisa King. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Tim Gallis. I'm also presenting this with Louisa King. I'm the Assistant Director for Mental Health Safeguarding and Access Services in Adult Social Care.
Morning, everyone. Louisa King, Head of Commissioning for Mental Health, Learn Disabilities, Dementia and Autism at NHS, I keep forgetting the name, South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board, which is at Sheffield Place.
So if I start off, if that's okay, give you a brief summary of the strategy and then Louisa King will come in on the details. She's been doing a lot of work to develop it. The vision for Sheffield is that there is a good emotional and mental health wellbeing for all at every stage of life. The key messages in this strategy is that we want a positive ambition and focused outcomes for people around mental health and wellbeing. Secondly, the strategy takes an evidence-based approach. And thirdly, it recognises that what happens in childhood has significant impacts in adulthood. And those are the key sort of principles that the strategy developed on. There are four key delivery areas in the strategy. The first one is that we need to develop an approach to the wider determinants of health. Second is that we do need to support children and young people so that there's ongoing health and wellbeing into adulthood. We need to focus on early help and prevention, early intervention. And finally, that we need to deliver good quality care and support when it's needed. The governance for this strategy is through the Mental Health and Learn Disability and Autism Board and we will report six monthly to that board. Committee is asked to endorse the strategy and the six monthly reporting, which we will do to you as well. And with that, I'll ask Louisa to come in and provide you some detail.
So we are aiming for quite a high level strategy that is really, the real detail is going to come in the work programmes, that are going to be coming to you and other committees on a regular basis. But what you'll notice when you look at it is that it's got a particular area that is focused on supporting children and young people. So I thought what I would do would just focus on those particular things that we'll be doing for children and young people. And I think one of the important things to note about this strategy is it's not about NHS services, but it's about, the aim is that, I mean, it is partly about NHS services, but it's also about recognising the whole kind of spectrum of services across the city and support the things that support children and young people to be emotionally healthy and well. So that's why on to the kind of delivery area two, when we talk about supporting the emotional, mental health and wellbeing of our children and young people, the first thing that we're focusing on is supporting infant mental health, maternal mental health, supporting children when they're born to give them a really great start in life, support their achievement and attachment. The second bit that we want to focus on is about increasing early intervention and targeted support for school-aged children in schools and making sure that their teachers and other professionals in schools have the training and the tools to really support children and their emotional resilience and wellbeing. Then one of the areas that we're focusing on or want to focus on is supporting children and young people when they're in crisis, making sure there's intensive support, home treatment, outreach services for them when they are in need and in crisis. And part of that is supporting suicide prevention and awareness as well. The fourth area is something that we're working with across the region of South Yorkshire, is a provider collaborative that is looking to reduce avoidable admissions to inpatient care and making sure that we have the right amount of resource available across the region to support those who do need some really intensive support. And then one of the things that I'm sure has come up before in this committee is recognising that when children turn 18, there's often that little period of time that can be difficult. And what we're wanting to say in this strategy is actually, we want to ensure there are clear service pathways in place for children, well, for people in the age category of 16 to 25, and making sure that there's not that kind of big point for children or adults when they turn 18. And then the final point, just on this particular one, is saying, you know, is just kind of reiterating the importance of safeguarding children and young people from exploitation and abuse. So that's the kind of the high level objectives, particularly for children and young people, that we've put into this strategy. And we will be working with partners across the system to deliver some of these objectives. And obviously, as Tim noted, I noted, we would endeavour to come back to you on a, on a regular basis to give you a bit more detail about what's happening with that.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report? So councillor Ross and then councillor Homshaw and councillor Darbit.
Thank you very much. I welcome this report and actually you preempted one of my questions because one of the concerns that members I'm sure have had and generally is about the transition from youth to adult. And we get case work on a continuing basis where it seems that, you know, people fall between the cracks and things. And so, although you've said it, I'm really asking for further reassurance that the all age will do exactly what it says on the tin, that it is a smooth, not even a transition, but there's just all linked up between the young people services and the adult services. So that there won't be that break when they have to, parents and the young person have to repeat the whole story again to another set of professionals and they will feel supported right through a transition time, which actually comes at, for all young people, comes at a difficult time when you're changing from being at a school to university, college, work environment and on top of that, if there are these issues. So just further reassurance about that. The second point is really, I want to endorse the strategy of early intervention in the old adage that prevention is better than cure. Because as has been set out somewhere in the report, actually, a lot of the mental health issues are established at a quite young age. And if we can tackle them, that it might prevent some of the problems in adulthood. So comments on those two points, please.
Yes, so shall I kick off and then you can come in? I totally agree with you that the transitions for young people into adulthood is fraught with some difficulties. There isn't just one transition, there's all sorts of different transitions. And I think we've been doing some work for a while on the transition from children's social care into adult social care. And I think that is working much better now. But there are other transitions across education and health that are outside of the social care domain, which also need considerable development. This strategy says that we are committed to doing that and developing all of those different pathways. Can you come with any more detail?
Yes. One of the things that we've been working on in the past year, not myself, because I'm fairly new and post, is a standard kind of operating protocol between CAMHS and adult mental health services that are based at the Health and Social Care Trust. And it's not perfect, but there are things that we are trying to do to kind of build on that to make the transition process a lot better. And we will continue to be exploring things that we can do to make that better. If there are particular case examples that you've got or that you'd like to share with me, I would welcome seeing them if you wanted to. And the other point about early interventions, I think you're right about the points about supporting children at the younger stage. And that's why we have had confirmation that they might be able to invest additional amounts of money in supporting children in schools and those kind of support teams in schools. So again, I can provide some reassurance that that is continuing to be a focus.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Homshaw.
Thank you very much for the report. You partly answered one of my questions. But my other one is in connection with the board. So very helpfully, how you've answered my question is because there's a grid on the back on page 66, which provides a list of who's, who will be involved in this. And I take it it is, will be involved in this. This has not been agreed yet as a board. So that's actually my first question.
So the board's been meeting for quite some time now.
Okay.
And it is councillor Argentio. Sorry, do you want me to repeat that? That's fine. Yes, so the board has been meeting for some time now. And councillor Argentio and councillor Lindas Hammond have both been attending for some time already. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does answer my question. Keep swapping. Yes. So that's, that's good. Right. So I'm clear now that it's been meeting since December 22 at least. Okay. I was going to ask about the input and the oversight on a political level from children, families and education as well, which isn't in here. And I know that I really value my engagement with the various groups that I'm, as deputy chair, part of, including the Carers Voice and some of the others. So I wonder whether there was space there to also include a member from education on there, seeing as it's an all-age strategy.
I think you're right to observe that that governance group is largely driven by health and adult social care. And representatives from education or children's side would be most welcome. So more than happy to talk to you outside of the meeting about getting that representation.
Thank you very much.
Could I just, yeah, if I could just come in on that, historically, this board, there is the Health, Mental Health and Wellbeing Board and there, let me just go back through, Health and Wellbeing, yeah. There would have, historically, have been political representation from children's on any all-age board. However, through the change in the way that we're, our governance, there have potentially been a few teething problems. So we have had that conversation about representation on anything to do with all age, because it is what it says, all age. There should always be, Brian, some, there must always be a voice of young people on these boards at a political and a officer perspective. So we will ensure that that is done from this point on. Thank you.
Councillor Lee. Oh, sorry, councillor Darbit.
Thanks very much. I've got two points. One of them is a question. For all policy and for all the papers that we get before, as we have a list of things that we go through to, you know, have the equalities been looked at. And here it's, you know, climate, the climate implications. I think climate anxiety is a huge thing and I'm not sure that it's been addressed here. And it's especially big in our upcoming generations. And I wondered if there was any particular thing that you thought we could do regarding that.
That's really, of course, I don't see any huge implications for the climate from this particular strategy, but there are sort of subsidiary effects. So for example, if we develop more providers within the council area for young people coming through to adulthood, then they will need to pursue suitable policies in regard to the climate, electric cars, et cetera. So those policies would be affecting the strategy. I don't see any particularly wider implications, but I'll stand corrected.
My point was that there is a lot of anxiety amongst young people about it. And I wondered if there was anything in specific, in this, in this paper specifically addressing those types of anxieties.
I see. I don't actually think there is. And maybe we need to take that away and give that further thought. Louisa might be able to correct me if I'm wrong.
Climate anxiety might be something that we could pick up in the delivery plan. So we've tried not to kind of focus on specific conditions or causes for anxiety in this particular version of the strategy. But I can go away and find out if there's any emphasis on climate anxiety in the work that we're already doing with children and young people and get back to you if there is anything. And then we can also see if we can pick it up in the delivery plan as well.
Thanks very much. Chair, my second point is not directed at the officers here today, but it is to just pick out an element within this. It's on, I haven't got page numbers on mine. Provide earlier help to people who need it, is that page item to expand access to talking therapies and increase the range of different therapies available. I'd like the committee to note that in line with what's coming next. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't want to address, I mean, I think it's a really important point you make about climate anxiety, especially young people, in young people, because, you know, they feel it's very big and they've got their whole lives ahead of them. They maybe feel that they have to tackle the worst effects of that, rather than some of us who may not be around to us, who have to, you know, deal with the full impact as it comes later on. And I think it's up to all, everybody in the city, not just the council, to ensure that they have got plans in place and are all working together to try. And that maybe goes some way to alleviate the anxiety. If you know that there's a plan, it can just help, even if the plan maybe needs to be revised and revised as we all want. So I think it is important point you make there. Mine is about just, I think it's a really good report and thank you, exactly known. Early intervention right from pre-birth onward is vital. It's that transition bit, isn't it, that is really crucial? Because that, you know, making that transition is one thing, but children may have all sorts of underlying issues and problems that are exacerbated at that transitional point. And many go under the radar because they are quiet, you know, the child's response is just to sit back, sit in the back of the class bus, so to speak, and nobody notices that they are in a great deal of pain, I guess. So it's about how, how do we start picking up? How can we pick up those children who don't come under, who fall under the radar of the adults involved with them, including their families? And also, the transition, you know, between services is absolutely vital and it can easily fall down. There's a different set of questions that adult services might ask compared to children's services and there needs to be some kind of discussion. I mean, there may be that that's happening, that professional staff dealing with children and professional staff dealing with adults have that two-way conversation about how they're going to manage that transition, I think. So it's more of those comments. And Covid, again, you know, those kids who were affected when we had in 2020, who were 14, 15, you know, during that transition, during that very vulnerable time, they have gone, maybe they've gone through that period and not been picked up at all. And I just wondered, are we aware of any research, local research, or are we aware of any issues that have arisen? And we're assuming that the numbers of, the numbers of children with mental health problems have increased because of that. So are they under the, again, under the radar?
I'm not aware of any specific research that talks about the impact of Covid on, were you meaning children who were reaching adulthood at this particular stage? I'm not, but I will go and look and see if there is some. I don't know if Andrew, you're looking at.
There's no specific research, yeah. It clearly is an emerging issue and there clearly is a view that, that it is going to have an impact. And schools report that that's manifesting itself in terms of behaviours. For example, I visited a school about a month ago and I looked in particular at their nursery. We were outdoors and lots and lots of very active children. And what I didn't realise until the head teacher pointed it out to me was none of them were actually talking to each other. And that's because of the impact of being at home and on their own as part of that. So I think research is coming, it's clearly something that's been looked at. I think it's just very difficult to quantify at the moment, but it will be coming and we can present that to the committee in due course.
I'm also thinking of those kids that were children who reached, who were 14, 15 when the pandemic started and again were isolating at home. Maybe with emerging mental health problems that became more established because they were at home and no one's going to pick, no one picked them up. Or maybe it's exacerbated. You know, people are anxious, avoid things. If you're not at school, you easily avoid things and that just can really compound any anxiety problems that are going to emerge. And I just wondered, I just wondered how we, have we picked that kind of problem up? Are we seeing an increased number following on into adult services because of that? Or if you can't answer that, if you haven't got the numbers, oh, not to worry. But just be aware of that.
I, I'm not close enough to the operational detail, but I can go away and ask you and get right to you.
If I can just come on the back of what councillor Lee's saying, we looked in at the recommendations today. And one of those is to bring back the delivery plan in six months and give us an update on progress. I think what's really important is that the members from the children's committee moving forward are more involved than that. I think we need to be more involved in the co-production of that delivery plan because we get case work from families, we're out in our communities, we've got a lot of information coming in and we will be asking the questions on behalf of those families who can't access services, on behalf of the schools that are struggling with the mental health and social and emotional wellbeing of their students. And I think rather than this just coming back to us every six months, I think it's really important that we are, ourselves and our offices are actually engaged in the delivery plan and looking at, you know, areas for deep dives into and making sure that things aren't missing within that and the arising issues that are coming up so that we can make sure that they, that the delivery plan is an evolving plan and it isn't just a static plan that we're going to get to the end of that and then review it. If things start to arise through the Covid stuff and lots of other things that are arising for young people, that we can be a bit more responsive. So what I would like to ask as part of that is that we are more involved moving forward, rather than just coming to committee, there could be workshops and we could engage with some of our other stakeholders. So councillor Lee and councillor Darbit.
I go back quite a way and just in the eighties, in the early eighties, when we had high levels of youth unemployment, kids, young people left school, stuck at home, developing mental health problems, not necessarily because they were unemployed. And that obviously made it worse, but they were going to develop a mental health problem and because they were stuck at home, not out and about seeing anything, anybody. That went, again, people, it wasn't picked up by medicals, by GPs, wasn't picked up by families until it was well established. And I just think there's, there's those emerging issues. And I just think there's, there's, those emerging issues were not found until, people didn't sort of pick that up until, you know, a good few years after that period of youth, high levels of youth unemployment.
Yes, perhaps I can come in there. So I totally accept your points there and I think some very pertinent questions and points been made. So we will definitely commit to making sure that we've got an involvement approach with you that's, that's greater than it is now. And yeah, without, that'll need to involve workshops and events that gives you the opportunity to contribute fully to the development. And I'd like to say that the development plan itself is, is work in progress. It is an evolving artefact and it will change as we go through. So that's most welcome and we'll definitely commit to that.
Thank you. Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you. Following up on Andrew's point, I suppose, having visited that school and found that that's what was happening. I did make a point in an earlier meeting about year twos, current year twos, so six-year-olds, who had missed out on early years, on nursery and on reception. And a particular school in my ward was finding it very difficult to deliver the year two education back to them because of what had happened to the year twos, the year twos weren't ready for it. And I'm just aware that that will always tend to increase the possibility of, of mental ill health. So that particular cohort, year twos, is, is current year twos, is something that I think we also need to look at. I know there are a lot of different cohorts we need to look at from this point of view, but that's, that's one that's come to my attention. And perhaps you could have a look at that as well.
Yes, we'll take that on board.
Thank you. So is there, are there any other questions or comments? Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for your report. I'm reading where it's half of all mental health problems are established by the age of 14. Do all schools, primary and secondary, have mental health champions? And is that monitored in any way so that children who are at certain schools are not getting a better experience in terms of mental health support as, you know, and other schools not getting a very good experience? Is, is mental health being talked about more in, in secondary schools in particular? So that children are really, it's really easy for them to get the support that they need?
I'm not an expert on the educational work, but Andrew is and that will be a pleasure to come in.
Thank you. So on a specific question councillor Whitaker about whether, whether every school has a mental health champion. The truth is I don't know, but we will check and I'll ask officers who work in education skills to check that and provide a written reply to the committee, which perhaps can be read out at the next committee meetings, which is really clear for the public record. But yes, I am confident that all schools are cognisant of children's needs in relation to mental health and will put things in place around that. What I suppose I'm not clear about is how widespread or consistent that is from school to school. But again, we can do some research into that and come back to the committee on that.
If I can just come in, historically, I don't remember the name of the programme, but the council did invest quite heavily under councillor Drayton into schools to put in, train the trainer training, working with key members of staff and students around social and emotional wellbeing and offering resources into all schools. And that was done probably about five or six years ago. And, and I'm sure that's ongoing, but we will get more information. I would call it Healthy Minds, but I can't remember what it was called.
Okay. I think it was Future Remind. Yeah.
Sorry, I'll let Andrew come back in and then councillor Whitaker and then councillor Holmes. Thank you.
So just coming out to councillor Whitaker's question, so specifically on mental health champions, we'll come back to that. All schools in Sheffield have been invited to take part in trauma-informed training, which is all part and parcel of that. Got a very significant trauma-informed programme underway. And the overwhelming majority of schools have signed up for that and are participating in that programme, which does automatically connect into issues in relation to mental health. And there are trauma-informed champions in those schools that are signed up to it. But we will again for a future meeting and by correspondence with the committee, we'll check the actual sign up. I do know that across South Yorkshire, in terms of other local authorities, Sheffield is the local authority with the most schools that are signed up to the trauma-informed approach.
Come back in on that. I mean, that's really good to know. In the past, I have had casework where I felt that teenagers have been totally let down from a mental health point of view from the schools that they were attending. And subsequently, they've gone on to leave school. And then you've got, you know, young adults who were then, you know, haven't had their needs addressed previously and are going on, you know, to be adults with even worse mental health problems. So yeah, thank you.
Did you want to come back in now?
I did want to give further detail that we can perhaps I can include in the briefing that you're giving as well. We do have, some schools in Sheffield do have a mental health support team. And that's part of, there's been lots of waves of additional investment and additional schools coming on board. So perhaps as part of that briefing, I can give you clarity on which schools have got a mental health support team and what that looks like as well.
That'd be lovely, thank you. Councillor Holmes, was your question answered or do you want to still come in?
My question was indeed answered. Thank you, Andrew, on trauma-informed schools. I was going to ask about how it segued into this, into this report. So thank you.
Thank you. So are there any other questions or comments on the report? So the committee today is being asked to endorse the all-age mental and emotional health and wellbeing strategy and note that approval will be sought through the Strategy and Resource Committee in April 2023. And to request that an occupying delivery plan is brought to the committee in six months' time, along with an update of progress made. Are we all happy to, to note that? Thank you. And could I also, I will have it noted that we've, we're going to work more closely together moving forward and do some workshops around that. That's great. Thank you very much for coming today. So the next item on today's agenda is item number 11, the conversion practice statement. The presenting officer today will be Jeanette Monday. Jeanette, if you'd like to present your report, thank you.
All right, Tim's just going to do the introduction and then I will fill in on the detail.
Yes, so once again, it's Tim Gollins, Assistant Director for Mental Health Safeguarding, those contact with adult social care. And Jeanette, of course, is the adult social, adult social care safeguarding specialist we've got. So this report is from the Adult Safeguarding Partnership Board. The background to this is that we were, adult social care was approached by a young man some time ago who asked for help regarding an instance of conversion therapy. He was provided with information, advice and guidance because the safeguarding thresholds for adult social care were not met. He's come, and he was asked to contact the local diocese because the incident occurred within a children's event venue. The incident was, the situation was not resolved and an investigation was commissioned with Bernardos, which is not yet delivered. But whilst that was going on, the Safeguarding Adults Board felt that the, the practice of conversion therapy was so sort of unacceptable that this policy statement was, was needed to support LGBTQ communities and people working in situations where conversion therapy is happening. The policy aims to do three things. First of all, raise awareness of, of conversion therapy. Two, encourage LGBTQ plus communities to speak out. Three, to provide a platform to support LGBTQ plus communities. It's been developed with the involvement of Safeguarding Adults Partnership Board, of course, the Equalities and Human Rights organisations, Children's Services, the Diocese of Sheffield, LGBTQ plus members and the individuals themselves that are referred to earlier. The key message of the policy is that conversion therapy is a practice seeking to change adult sexual orientation or gender identity on the basis that the person concerned needs to be cured from being LGBTQ plus. And that's harmful and unethical. It's recommended that committee endorse the position statement and the delivery plan. And committee should note that the same approval will be sought from the Strategic Resources Committee on the 15th of March. Committee has asked to agree for the director of adult social care to bring an update to the committee on an annual basis. And at that point, I'll ask Jeanette to come in with further details.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. If it's okay, I'll just summarise the report. I've just got one page that just summarises the report and the position statement, just to give a little bit more detail. As Tim's already said, the definition of conversion, and we're calling it conversion practice, the, the task and finish group preferred the terminology of conversion practice rather than conversion therapy. So the definition of conversion practice that we've been using for this work is that it is an intervention that seeks to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. Conversion practice works towards one goal and that goal is to cure someone from being lesbian, gay, bisexual or trans, or transsexual. So this proposal for a position statement, so just to be clear, it's a position statement, not a policy. The proposal, the position statement supports the rights and autonomy of all people. So the position statement that you've, that you've all got, defines the issues and it proposes strategies that we anticipate will have a positive result for the LGBTQ plus community. It's not a mandatory policy that can be enforced, but it does provide a framework for guidance across the numerous organisations that we are hoping will endorse it. So as Tim's already said about the background and development of this work that originated from that young man that did approach the council, who'd been subject to this, to this practice. He was really traumatised by that experience. And he didn't meet any of our adult criteria for safeguarding. And it was initially really difficult for us to find ways to help him or to even understand his experience. And I think we thought that conversion practice was something that was in the, in history and was no longer happening. So with this in mind, we wanted to look at strategies to raise awareness so that people and professionals can identify conversion practice, so they know what that looks like, what that is when it occurs. And also to be able to speak with confidence to those people who come forward who have been subjected to this. We want to encourage people to speak out and we want to identify support for those people who've experienced this and we want to be able to aid their recovery. So we're asking for recognition that this practice still exists. But we know from our recent experiences and the time that we've been doing this work that adults and young people are either reluctant or quite often afraid to come forward. We, we know that many are coerced into this practice and we know that it can cause harm, including anxiety and depression and sometimes even suicide. This practice also perpetuates stigma, prejudice and discrimination. And that's based on sexual orientation and gender identity. So our aim is to send a message of equality and inclusion and for Sheffield to be a safe place for those people with diverse gender, diverse gender and sexuality expressions to live, work, learn, receive services or worship. So we do recognise that we need to continue our learning journey. We need to continue to be informed by the experiences of those individuals who have been subject to conversion practices. And we, we're committed to keeping in mind any government-stated plans to introduce a total ban on this practice. And that will always be reflected in a review of the Equality Impact Assessment and in the further development of the position statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, we will, we will go to members for questions and debate. At this point in the meeting, I would like to inform everyone that we have received an email from Dr Nicky Cohen with some issues that have been raised. And I'd just like to go over to Sarah Burnett from Legal and Andrew Jones to address this email and then we can open up the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The, the letter that the committee have all received is a number of pages and there was an attachment. Obviously, the committee have all had that, but just to, the doctor does summarise in their covering email what they, their key points are. So just for the benefit of the webcast, just to say what that says. He says, please find attached a letter explaining why the report to Education, Children and Families Policy Committee is deeply flawed about so-called transconversion and should not be adopted as policy. Salient points, counselling and psychotherapy are regarded as transconversion. It totally contradicts the finding of the CAS report commissioned to address the failings of the Tavistock Clinic. It suggests ignoring the law, power 4.1.4, and it would stifle all debate and create a climate of fear. An article on the draft updated NHS guidance for gender-confused children, published by the Society for Evidence-Based Gender Medicine. So that's the summary of the, the position. I know that Andrew's Director of Children's Services will respond in terms of the, the council's response to that. Just to say, Chair, I'm satisfied that the report in front of you today doesn't suggest ignoring the law. That paragraph's a reference to the fact that this is a developing area. We're not, this doesn't contradict anything that is in law, but there is, are areas where the law is silent and, and this is dealing with those spaces.
Thank you, Sarah. Andrew?
Thank you, Chair. And in particular, thank you, Sarah, for clarification on legal points as well. So what I would say, members, is we know this is a significant and sensitive area. We acknowledge that. And we have received the view of Dr Nicky Cohen in written correspondence. And we will be cognisant of the views expressed as the council adopts and implements this position statement further. The position statement, as, as was mentioned earlier though, is just that it's a position statement, it's not a policy. And the application of the position statement will be a matter of professional judgment on a case-by-case basis. The position statement does not seek to limit such professional judgments and decisions. And that would be my response to that.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll now open up for questions and comments from members. Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. My point is particularly relevant to what Dr Nicky Cohen has said. It has come to my attention on several occasions that there is a, a group of people who think that psychotherapy and other talking therapies represent conversion practice. And I would like, I would like this committee to recognise that in fact they are not aimed at changing somebody's sexuality. They are aimed at helping young people discover what their sexuality, gender, et cetera, is. And therefore, I'd like this committee to specifically exclude that from the definition of conversion practice. There's also on page 19 on the Equality Impact Assessment, a phrase, gender-affirming perspective, which sounds fairly innocent. And, you know, a lot of people might think, yes, that's great. But in fact, it has particular, a particular impact. If anyone has read the interim CAS report, then they will know that there are two, two methods of dealing with people who present as trans to the transgender clinic, the, the gids at the Tavistock. One of them is to affirm that gender. And those people whose gender is affirmed then go on almost exclusively to become transgender. And a lot of those then go on to detransition later on because it was the wrong decision for them. Whereas the other approach, which isn't gender-affirming, it's a wait-and-see thing. About 80% of the people desist from, they don't want to go through with being transgender. And they will either become lesbian or gay or go on in, in some other way. So, so the term gender-affirming is an actual, it actually has a meaning other than just, yes, that's nice, isn't it? So I'm, I'm very, I'm very aware that that's a, a phrase that has a particular meaning. that I would like to explore ways of putting it that doesn't go down that particular technical route. Have I made myself clear there?
Yeah, if I can just get some clarity, what you're asking, can you just?
Yeah, I think the term gender-affirming perspective would tend to mean that people would be sent down that route willy-nilly and that most of those people would become transgender, even though it may not be the right thing for them in the end because they would, a certain proportion of them. And again, we don't know how many because the Tavistock never kept very good records on that, which is one of the things that appears in the interim CAS report. We don't know how many, but a lot of them will detransition because it was the wrong thing for them. And they've gone through both the medication, which is the puberty blockers and the estrogen or the testosterone, depending on the starting sex. And some of them have also gone through the surgery. So they might end up being, you know, having been castrated and not being able to function fully as an adult.
So can I just bring this back in then, councillor Garbutt, if that's all right? And just take some advice about what you're asking for from Sarah?
I'm asking for an alternative wording to gender-affirming.
You're probably asking for an amendment, but we need to ask Sarah about that.
I think the difficulty we have here, Chair, is that this position statement has been adopted by a different organisation who is asking us to endorse it. So it's their position statement. The council can either choose to endorse it or adopt it or not. We can't change somebody else's position statement. We can say we would only be prepared to adopt it if it said something different, but I think we'd have to propose what that wording would be. I think I understand the point that councillor Garbutt's making about, I've had other conversations this week where different people have meant different things by the same phrase. And I understand the concern that councillor Garbutt's got. But I think that's the challenge we've got from a, the point of view of this has been adopted by the safeguarding board and they are presenting this to a number of organisations saying, please adopt our position statement. So it's not, we can either adopt it or not. I suppose we could adopt it with variation, but then we wouldn't be adopting their position statement. We'd be adopting something different.
Thank you, Sarah. Does either of you want to come in on that?
If I can just say, obviously we don't want it to have unintended consequences. And if those unintended consequences by having something like that statement means that there's going to be affirmation and treatment too soon for, particularly before a child. Initially, this was wrote with adults in mind and then obviously it's coming to children's services and we need to consider what that impact might be. So we don't want that affirmation and treatment too soon, but neither do we want those practices that eliminate and suppress identities which could be seen as conversion practice. So it's getting that balance, isn't it? What I can say is I can take it away and we can consider any amendments. I don't know if that's the right thing to do.
Just from my perspective, I think the Adult Safeguarding Board has produced this position statement to be really clear. And it makes a good deal of sense, I think, for adults because the Mental Capacity Act takes controls post 16. I think there are different issues perhaps for children. And as Jeanette says, we don't want to cause any unintended consequences here. Happy to be flexible in our approach to this.
Is that all right, councillor Garbutt? So we'll just need to, when deciding whether we're endorsing or not, need to look at a wording for that, if somebody could give us a hand with that. Do any other members have any questions or comments on the paper presented to us today? councillor Ross?
Thank you. Initially, I thought this might have been, when I was read it, fairly straightforward. But as other things come to light, it becomes a bit more fraught with difficulty. The position that I hold is that, you know, I support the total intentions of this. But as has been pointed out in both ways really, that especially trying to apply an adult strategy to children, there might be some unintended consequences there and nuances that we have to take into account. So whilst being very supportive of this, I think perhaps a caveat in our final wording that ensuring that is, the position statement is age-appropriate in relation to children. I don't know whether that's helpful or not at this point.
Thank you, councillor Ross. councillor Lee?
So I think we all agree that conversion therapy to achieve a cure, whatever age that person is, is not the route anybody would recommend and we wouldn't agree with that. And none of us are experts here on this, I guess. For adult, it feels it's more straight, it is very, very straightforward. If somebody feels they are trans, then they should be helped with the right kind of counselling to it, so they understand the implications and what they're going to, you know, what people have to face. That's, but that's not therapy to convert, that's not therapy to cure. That's counselling to support, isn't it? And I guess the same would apply to children. It's therapy or counselling, you know, therapy, counselling, sometimes the two are the same, to support. But I think there are, obviously there's some issues around young people that we need to consider, I guess. Yeah. Very difficult, isn't it?
Would you like to come back on that bit, anything?
No, only to say that, you know, it is this issue around consent, I think. And it's much easier to discern in an adult world where young people can't necessarily consent. Well, they can't consent. So it's about whether or not the therapeutic intervention is classed as conversion therapy, isn't it? And that is the ambiguity here. And without any broader consideration of that at a national level, it is ambiguous. And I guess there could be some consequences or implications for just agreeing this policy as a ubiquitous policy across children's and adults. But I guess to consider that decision properly, maybe you need children's social care officers to advise you.
I think that's the way I was kind of leaning here. I think we welcome this, and I think some people keep referring to it as policy and some people refer to it as a statement. This is a position statement, isn't it? It's not a council policy and it's not, and it's from adult services. I think we're right. I think there needs to be some, for us moving forward in our work programme, that children's services need to take a look at this as well. I think at this point, if no one's got anything else to add, or councillor Homeshaw, then I'll sum up.
I think the grey box on page 19 actually clarifies, in my opinion, what conversion therapyal practice is. That it is about an attempt to cure someone. And I think that is a dangerous and, it's a dangerous position to be taking. And it should be subject, in my opinion, to ban. So we are not suggesting that. We are suggesting a position on this. I think we need to provide support for the rights and autonomy of all people, regardless of their sexual identity. And we need to condemn this harmful and unethical practice, which I don't think does include the talking therapies that are referred to. This is a particular type of an attempt to change someone in a way that is forceful and that should not be allowed. So that will be my position on it. And I would be more than happy to support the endorsement of this policy. Sorry, not policy, it's not policy, this position.
Thank you, councillor Homeshaw. So in light of that, summing up, which was really succinct, are the committee happy to endorse this position statement on the basis that this council have committed to this being the start of an ongoing learning journey? Okay, councillor Garbutt, are you declining?
I can't, I can't support it whilst the term gender-affirming is in there. And whilst we haven't specifically put outside the scope of conversion practice the psychotherapy and counselling services that councillor Lee was mentioning. Until we've done that, I can't support this.
Thank you. Is there any way, because it's not, we've just been asked to endorse it, aren't we? So it's not for us to amend it. So do I take it that all other members are happy to endorse this statement and councillor Garbutt has declined to endorse?
Can you just read out your statement again, Chair?
What I just said? Okay. So the recommendation is?
None of us here, what I'm picking up, none of us here would support conversion therapy towards a cure as being anything that anybody should be thinking about in this day and age. It's just not on. Just, I'm sure we all agree that one. It's, and there's nothing wrong with counselling to help people go through a process they want to go through because they feel it's the right thing for them, absolutely, yeah.
Andrew?
I suppose I just wanted to add in, because we've referred to the Adult Safeguarding Board as if it's some other organisation. The council is a partner. So actually, the council has already, through its membership of the Adult Safeguarding Board, added its endorsement of this, admittedly as an adult safeguarding board. But I just want to be clear, this is not a board that actually exists in complete separation from the council. And we are a full member and partner of that safeguarding board. And partnerships, we needed to be clear about that. And I think I'm going to give you, I will refer to Gillick competences, which are themselves not absolutely set. But it's, so in other words, when we talk about the impact of this in children's, it's not an absolute cutoff point at age 18 that children become adults and therefore can actually, you know, be protected by this statement. In truth, children under the age of 18 can consent to medical, clinical support interventions or whatever. And actually, that age is not fixed. That is based upon an individual clinical assessment of their competency to do that. Hence my original response to Dr Count, that actually this does not seek to actually limit individual professional judgements on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll read the recommendations again and then I'm happy to review the statement with regards to endorsing this statement. So the recommendation is, one, endorse a sign-up to the Safeguarding Board Conversion Practice Position Statement and Delivery Plan, noting that approval will be sought from Strategy and Resource Committee on the 15th of March 2023. And requests that the Director of Adult Health and Social Care to bring an update to committee on an annual basis regarding implementation on the statement. I'm happy to take advice from other members and professionals in the room. But we are proposing that this committee endorse on the basis that the council have a commitment to this being the start of an ongoing learning journey. And potentially adding, and with the continued work with other professionals in this area. Okay. So for the record, all members agree to that wording, other than councillor Garbutt, is that right? councillor Homeshaw? Yep. councillor Whitaker? councillor Ross? councillor Lee? Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would hope, though, that we do continue to work on this together when the final reports do come in. And if there are any changes or amendments, that this comes back to a workshop maybe so that children's services are involved in that as well. Thank you.
Sorry, if I can say children's services were part of the task and finish group, but not yet.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We would tend to commit to do some wider work with you.
Yeah, and I think it's an awareness, building awareness of members as well of this is really, really important. Yeah, absolutely. So that concludes the meeting for today. What I would, oh, sorry, councillor Homeshaw?
I just wanted to thank officers for their work on this. It's obviously taken a long time and it's gone through a number of different departments, public health and adult and other departments as well. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. And as co-chair of this committee and this being our last meeting of this committee on this municipal year, I would like to thank you all as colleagues for the work that we have done over this year. And I would like to thank councillor Rooney, who's my co-chair, who's not here today because he's not well and he is recuperating and hopefully getting plenty of rest, ready to come back fighting fit after me. But I would also just like to remember councillor Murphy, who's no longer with us or we lost unfortunately earlier on in the year. But again, I would really like to thank you all because we've done some really good work together around alternative provision and lots of other things this year. So thank you all very much. I'd like to thank officers for putting up with us all, meeting our demands. So yeah, thank you. councillor Garbutt, did you just want to add one more thing?
Yes, again, it's been a pleasure working on this committee. I won't be standing for re-election, so this will be my last meeting. So thanks very much to everyone who's, with whom we've worked really well, I think.
Thank you. And that's the end of today's meeting. Thank you.